Jimmy. Yeah, I love that he. He forced law, but he educated as he's doing it.
He's pretty good.
Is it moving?
So like.
Let me see if I can see.
Well, you do. I just didn't know if you printed it or not, so. Okay.
Being elected official that I ever like one in California that I ever went was the sheriff. Like we really. We got a conservative. Liberal cities, you know. Like that he destroyed. But what they did actually. Serious slice.
Nice.
Fraud.
Okay, that sounds good. Train's got caps.
Yeah, absolutely. I always come up somewhere.
Yeah, we'll wait five minutes.
My mom is always doing this.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Cindy. We're waiting four minutes for Commissioner to show up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Twenty-three. See Commissioners' speech is on Zoom. Commissioner Rustad, Commissioner Ingin and myself are here and Commissioner Hagan is on her way. We will start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States.
It's America. Which is sounds.
God.
With liberty.
Right. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting? So moved by Commissioner Ingin, second. Commissioner Rustad, all right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion is carried unanimously. Approval of the order of agenda.
I would like to move. Where are you on this? Say that again.
I bet.
I bet. I'm gonna move Nick up to. Someone go right away.
Well, we've got. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a approval of the order of agenda then? Oh, we have to approve that, yeah. All those who have motion approved, Commissioner Hagan, second, Commissioner Rustad, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carried unanimously. All right, approval of the consent agenda, bills, employee status changes, overtime, out of state travel and county deed. Anybody wish to have anything pulled if you wanted to talk about? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval.
Hey. Motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Hagan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion is carried unanimously. All right, Nick, you're up.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for adjusting the agenda. I got a personal commitment to get to. Then no longer reading would take. One request and a couple of tidbits for the board. And one formal request would be the recommendation of consultant engineers for our next round of bridge projects. There were three firms submitted proposals. Collins Engineers, Whitseth and K L J Whitseth voluntarily backed out for other reasons. And the selection committee that interviewed Collins and K L J was Commissioner Hagan, Scott Clayton in my, in the highway office and myself. The interviews went well. We did. There's also rankings and interview rankings that were included in the packet. And the selection committee would recommend K L J as the consultant engineer for project.
I have a motion to approve that. Yeah.
So.
So move for Mr. Rustad, second, by Commissioner Ingin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motions carried.
Thank you. Just for words. It's hard to keep track of all this. I kind of spreadsheet and things, but. One big bridge over the Turtle River, I'm talking about two, it seemed to be a big expensive one that's eighty percent federally funded, twenty percent local. We are appropriately budgeted for this project for next year, even though they probably won't be built till. The other. Three structures are hundred percent local or hundred percent federally funded, so. That is a rarity and very nice. One other tidbit, maybe some commissioners, I sent an email on today thanking a bunch of state legislators for Senate Bill twenty-one eighty-three, which reimbursed counties and cities for excessive story move all. We did receive that money actually a few weeks ago. I failed to mention at the last commission meeting, but we got four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in change, which still doesn't make our budget whole, but it really helps with fuel, overtime, equipment repair. Those are the three big ones we took hits on, so that is very nice. There was one township that was separate because they do their own story, well, Johnstone, they got twelve thousand dollars, but. Yeah, I thought it appropriate and I need to share that tidbit with the board that that was very nice and let the state legislators know that. That's very appreciated. The other tidbit for the commission is the. Last legislative session, the state legislature designated ten million dollars of. Of money to go to township, so there's a grant opportunity out there for townships to apply for. They tried to get federal, well, federal rule or. Money with federal rules to townships before it's failed because it's very challenging to do that. So the big curve ball in this application that I see as they put the counties in charge. So every application has to go through the county, which means me and my staff. So that's going to be a lot of work for us, but we're gonna have to figure it out and. It notice was sent to the townships by giving them a little more notice and a little more instruction on how that works. I, I don't know, I'm trying to think of projects that they would have that would qualify. There's a few that I think would. One of the big curve balls is is minor structures, so like a forty-eight inch culvert, seventy-two inch culvert. Those are like good candidates, I think here, but they would need a bunch of them to the minimum project size, I think was fifty thousand dollars. The curve ball of that is is in Grand Forks County, we're an anomaly. Every forty-eight inch culvert larger is a county culvert. So those burdens aren't on our townships. We take care of them, so they don't have those applications. There is a local match for FEMA sites, so if there, if the local match on a FEMA project, FEMA eligible project is ten thousand or more, and they come up multiple projects in the one to get to that ten grand. Then they can maybe qualify, so they can get state money to substitute the local match for the federal project because it's fifteen percent locally funded. Which fifteen percent township funded, I should say. So there are some of those that I think would be worthwhile to apply for. The other big things, what they're trying to do is. To economic generators, to improve road signals, so say there's an elevator that's access on a township road. They're trying to think, I don't, we have too many of those, most are elevators that access the county roads, or even. You know, eight ton tournament in the spring on purpose for that, but. Anyway, just for the board's knowledge that we're, we're gonna be working on that here. Applications are due in about five weeks, so. One little curve ball, I don't miss Nelson, we get some phone calls, it's in this application. How it's some confusion is preference will be given to those townships that levy at least eighteen mills. We have forty-one townships and we have fourteen that are less than eighteen mills. It doesn't mean they won't get it, just means preference will be given. So just depends what applications are submitted and what comes in, so. Questions? Thank you. As I am.
Mr. Varda.
I passed out some photos for some of y'all, Mr. Ingin, you saw them last time I came up, so the same photos. So we're seeing many issues today, a lot of leadership failures in the county and they're centering the agenda of lack of skills to perform a function. Today I want to address a very significant issue in our midst, failure of the state's attorney to perform the duty issues elected to perform. I voted for Ms. Wong Stat because she ran unopposed and based on communication from other citizens, I believe she was performing her duties and had no issues with her leadership. After peeling back the onion and seeing the two levels of prosecution she provides for government employees, I wish I could take my vote back. My research has uncovered serious dereliction of duties and a serious lack of accountability. The position of state's attorney is to represent the government, the people, against criminal offenders in court. And prosecution is effectively applying the law or executing the law. A law written that is not enforced is not a law. And we're seeing that quite a bit in today's society and the results are catastrophic. Ms. Wong Stat made a comment in twenty eighteen, one common thread, she said, no matter what caseload you're working, is you really feel like you're making a positive impact on the people in our community. Well, Ms. Wong Stat, your performance in selective prosecution has done the exact opposite. Your blind eyes and your ears have afforded a nefarious group to negatively impact the most vulnerable and the most innocent among us. That's our children. The twenty-twenty-three legislative session brought about quite a few wins for parents in the state of North Dakota. The people through their legislature have spoken and they've pushed back against an ideology that places the parents in the back of the bus and provided for other influences to take control. The harm to the children is palpable and it's measuring levels of depression, addiction and suicide. The legislature was effective in passing a law that removes some of those influences from the grasp of young children and place them back in the hands of the true caretakers and that is parents. We've already got laws on the books, but we're just not enforcing. In Grand Forks, we've had two instances where outside forces have placed pornography in the hands of your children under the guise of mental health and equity. First, the school district placed pornographic materials in the school library that describes very erotically rape, bestiality, sexual assault and molestation. These are not books required for a curriculum, but for general reading. The, as identified by this district, there is no educational benefit to these books. These books are there to groom our children. Here's an excerpt. He pinned her hands over her head and ground his hips against her. Ash could feel his erection hot against her stomach. It wasn't the way it normally was, but Josie had to admit that it was exciting. She couldn't remember ever feeling so heavy as if her heart were beating between her legs. She clawed at Matt's back to bring him closer. Yeah, he groaned. He pushed her thighs apart and then suddenly Matt was inside, pumping so hard that she scooted back on the carpet, burning the backs of her legs. Wait, Josie said, trying to roll away beneath him, but he clapped his hand over her mouth, drove harder and harder until Josie felt him come. Seaman, sticky and hot, pool on the carpet beneath her. That's just disgusting. And Eddie, looking at the Miller test or any other test out there. That's perversion of pornographic. I have two other. I have two other examples. I'm not gonna read them because it doesn't get better. These are books that are there in the library for middle schoolers to check out. I saw correction from the school and the school district and I used their process for removing these books from the library. The documents were filed in March of twenty twenty-two. To this day, there's not been a resolution, but the costs were estimated to be eighteen thousand dollars to get them to read the books twice and make a decision. Another disgusting example of grooming, when just based off the face of the claim, they should have been removed immediately. After a year of waiting, I filed a complaint with the Grand Forks Police Department. They investigated and they sent the complaint to the state's attorney. State's attorney elected not to press charges. The second crime was perpetuated by the county library. They were providing books to children ages up to eleven. Unsupervised with books that showed sexual activities of multiple people in cartoon form. It was disgusting. One photo that you have in your packet, it shows a penis saying hello to a vagina and the vagina saying, come in, cartoon. There's another cartoon in there where a male is laying on top of a female and it shows the penis inserted into the vagina. That's what we're allowing to have happen. Again, these books are in an area that any child, no matter the age, can go to the shelf and pull in view. Now, that particular book was relocated to the adult nonfiction section. Unfortunately, it shows two women having intercourse and saying it can make a baby, right? That's nonfiction nowadays. There are also cartoons. The request was to move the books to an area that was supervised so children could not have such easy access. I apologize. I have a book at home that I checked out from the children's section that describes masturbation, zero to eleven. And in the book, it's led by cartoon characters of children, eight, nine, nine and a half and ten. And they're the ones talking about the good feelings you get by stroking your middle parts. This is what we want to show our kids, Ms. Wong Stat. This is what you're accepting. Some were, but some were moved, some were not. During the meeting, comment was made, how is our staff supposed to go through each book? My response is the same as it was since this conversation began. Use your parents, use the tools available. They'll step up. Let's give them that opportunity. Quit holding back. Yes, sir, I'm looking right at you. We did not ask for removal as some would like you to believe, because again, freedom of speech in America, and I'm all for it. We did ask that they just relocate them so the kids couldn't get to them unsupervised. Banning books was never the course of action we desire to take. Moving the books out of the children's area to a more restricted area, that was our goal. When the library was presented with the photos of the pornography, they were providing the children in the area. They were unwilling to take action until a formal complaint was completed. This was an asinine stance to take considering the material that was like. I filed a complaint in the Grand Forks Police Department. It was investigated and was sent to the state's attorney for prosecution. Yeah, by a cookie time of results, no, no action taken. It's okay. In both cases, there were adults that were hired by the local government that were providing and even today defending these materials. They want to provide these types of things to our children. They are grooming our children against the will of the people. The person that should be charging the offenders has elected instead to enable and empower the groomers against the will of the people. North Dakota Central Code is clear and does not leave room for interpretation. For chapter fourteen, sub paragraph ten oh six, it's unlawful to encourage or contribute to the deprivation or delinquency of a minor. The penalty is a class A misdemeanor. At twelve point one of sentence, a person is guilty of a class C felony if, knowing of its character, the person disseminates obscene material or if the person produces, transports or sends obscene material with intent that it be disseminated. I love the first one, knowing of its character, the person disseminates obscene material. I think that's exactly what's going on. It's not rocket science. Just not willing to execute the laws of North Dakota or uphold the will of people. Ms. Wong Stat, please resign. Grand Forks County under Ms. Wong Stat is suffering a significant increase in many other crimes also. In twenty twenty-one, there is a ten point five increase, percent increase in violent crimes. A fifteen point eight percent increase in threats and harassment, an eighteen point seven percent increase in sibling assaults and sex offenses increased twenty-three point four percent. Not, not to mention narcotics increasing twenty-three point three percent. Some might say asleep at the wheel. I wouldn't say that. I would say that we're lacking vision, skills, desire to execute the duty of office you hold. Your resignation could provide an opportunity for our community, Grand Forks, to get better. Mr. Ingin, I was also disappointed with you last meeting when we spoke beforehand. I approached the meeting, you, you educated me and I appreciate that. I thought I'd be able to come in and speak, but it's better than I get on the agenda and I thank you for that. But when I told you and I filed you those photos, you said that you don't really expect us to charge a librarian? Sir, I absolutely do. If they've been informed what's being shown to children and they don't take action on it, then yes, I absolutely do believe we forced North Dakota Central Code. One hundred percent.
Can I come into that?
Yes, sir, I've got.
Where that yesterday, I recorded in another state. Blocked that portion of that state's law, which is very similar to ours, saying you can't charge a librarian unless they're the ones actually giving it to children.
I don't know what law they, I don't know what law they prosecuted ever, but I don't know what law they were trying to prosecute ever.
Very, I read.
But the North Dakota Century Code law is very clear and that was even before the new law just came into effect today. So I don't know, sir.
I think it's, it's a matter for the courts to decide, not for the commission to take any action against another elected official.
Sir, the problem is the courts will never be able to decide if the elected official never charges. That's the bottom line. I will never be able to get to B if I don't get to A.
Yeah, well.
Mr. Chair.
Point is, it's, it's on a federal court matter rather than a county commission matter, in my point.
Mr. Varda, we'll give a, a state's attorney Wong Stat a chance here.
Absolutely. Just let me. And sir.
Okay, but it's been up ten minutes now, so.
Okay, so in case you're unaware, and I don't see how we really could be, the nefarious abusers are very clear in their desire and they've stated on numerous occasions what they desire. I'm gonna find two examples. Number one, there's a song by a gay choir from San Francisco and it says, but you're frightened, you think we'll corrupt your kids. If our agenda goes unchecked, funny, just this once, you're correct. We'll convert your children, we'll convert your children, happens bit by bit, quietly and suddenly, and you will barely notice it. We're coming for them, we're coming for your children, we're coming for them, we're coming for them, we're coming for your children, for your children. And another example just happened recently at a pride march where marchers were chanting, we're here, we're queer, we're coming for your children. Very basic, not hidden in any way, shape or form. This is what we're fighting. So finally, we leave the loop seventeen-two. It were better for him that a mill, a millstone were hanged right his neck and he was cast into the sea than that he should offend one of these little ones. Our children are the most precious asset we have. We're really screwing them up. I just asked you stop. Ma'am. I asked you, what you got moving forward? If it, it ain't gonna take us prosecuting a librarian, it's gonna take the offenders to understand that, yes, we will prosecute the law. And two, we're not gonna take this anymore.
Who are the offenders?
Those that choose to keep the books available to children unsupervised, those that provide the books. It's North Dakota Century Code, sir.
Yeah, I understand. That's pretty vague.
Well, I just gave you two examples. I, I can tell you what they are, they are again.
In this, in this county that was marked.
Sir, I just said, it's like the county library has it and they're made aware and they haven't made one change, one book. And the school district. Both have had charges or, excuse me, both have had a complaint filed against them and both complaints were turned over. They want to prosecute. Now, my, I, I turn over.
Thank you, Mr. Varda, members of the commission. First, I, I'd just like to start out by thanking Mr. Varda for his interest in the work of our office. I certainly appreciate when any citizen is interested in the important business that comes before our office. I wasn't privy to the handouts that you provided to the others. I assume that they're the same as the reports you made to law enforcement on the two instances that you reported. If they're not, I would appreciate a copy of them, so I'm singing from the same sheet of music as everyone is.
Yes, ma'am, they're exactly the same.
Thank you. I think first to kind of understand the context of this situation, much of the public discussion that surrounded the topic of. Um, much of the public discussion that surrounded um the topic of the books and libraries stemmed from some legislation that was before the North Dakota Legislature this last session earlier this year. Um, and I provided some, I have some copies here that I'll hand out just so everybody understands what we're talking about. The first statute that I passed around is Senate Bill twenty three sixty. You'll see, it's noted on the top of the page. Uh, and I think there are others, if there are others, like a copy of these bills as well.
I'm familiar with both these, so I can I can give out my copy if anyone would like it.
So the Senate Bill twenty three sixty passed the North Dakota Legislature but was subsequently vetoed by Governor Burcom. So it did not actually become law, but it was one that was a part of the legislative deliberations. Um, you'll notice in this statute, if you turn to page three. Um, this statute did provide criminal penalties on on page three. Under paragraph six, it provides a violation of a willful violation of this statute as a class B misdemeanor. Um, while we're down on that same page, you'll see that Governor Burcom did issue a message as part of his veto of this law. Um, just to kind of summarize uh his message, he acknowledges that protecting children from sexually explicit material is common sense. Um, he also acknowledges that he signed a different bill, House Bill twelve oh five, which prohibits this material in children's sections and establishes a review process for libraries to follow. Um, he also notes in his veto that the law he did sign, um, or or excuse me, the law that he vetoes uh creates a burden for libraries. It's expensive and it's unfunded. He also discusses the fact that this bill criminalizes potential disagreements over what constitutes material harmful to minors based on the bill's subjectivity. Um, I think it's important to note how Governor Burcom ends his message. He states, America is built on a foundation of freedom of speech, the free exchange of ideas, and the freedom from government interference to read or not to read books that share ideas and stories across the spectrum of human nature and experience. The best way we protect our youth is through involved and caring parents making decisions in the best interest of their children, whether at home, online, or in a public or school library. Not with unfunded, one-size-fits-all government mandates. And for those reasons, Senate Bill twenty three sixty is vetoed. But uh, this went back before the legislature because as we're all aware, with the super majority, they can overrule a governor's veto and that attempt fails. So twenty three sixty did not become law in North Dakota. Um, what the governor does reference that he did sign into law was House Bill twelve oh five. Um, this is the other handout that I handed out to everyone. Um, you'll notice in paragraph two of this bill, it specifically provides that a public library may not maintain in its children's collection inventory books that contain explicit sexual material. However, the distinction here is you'll notice in this law, there's no criminal penalty provided like that other law um would have provided for had it been signed into law. Rather, this bill provides a process for libraries to follow to gain compliance with this expectation provided by the legislature. To summarize, uh by January first of next year, they have to have a policy and process in place for reviewing uh books that community members are concerned about. And then by May first of twenty twenty four, uh they need to submit a report of compliance to the legislative management. Um. Now, Mr. Varda references other laws that are currently on the books um that could apply to a situation like this. Um, when reviewing these reports that came into law enforcement, our office did an extensive review of the applicable laws that could be applied to a situation like this. The most specific that that could apply is North Dakota has a obscenity statute which provides a felony level of offense um for uh essentially dissemination of sexually explicit materials. Um, I could go on a long list of reasons why I don't believe those elements are met in these particular situations, but just to kind of hit the high spots. Um, a violation of that obscenity statute requires that um the offender knows of its character. When law enforcement investigated these matters, they were unable to identify a suspect because it's difficult to know who in particular in the library knew of the content of those books. Does the library get it through a subscription service? Does somebody physically read each book? We need to prove as prosecutors that they knew that that the character of the nature of that book. Um, in addition, the obscenity statute prohibits dissemination of obscene material when it is obtained for pecuniary gain. As we all know, libraries typically don't charge for lending of their books. Um, and so this statute is geared towards offenders that are using it for pecuniary gain. Dissemination is defined by this statute in that way. Um, to the best of my knowledge, the school library and the public library here in town do not charge for the lending of their books. So that's another challenge that we face. We also completed some legislative review of this obscenity statute. It was enacted back in the seventies after the uh court struck down a prior statute that North Dakota had in place um for being unconstitutional. And so in reviewing the legislative history from when this was enacted, um, the intent of the legislature in enacting this law was to apply for or apply to individuals that are disseminating pornographic videos or images or things of the like. It was not designed to regulate books in a library, which is also a challenge we would face should we proceed with prosecution under the statute. Um, lastly, I think it's important to note that um any good lawyer knows the rules of statutory construction require us to interpret statutes to be harmonious with all the other laws. And so when we have a situation where a statute provided for criminal penalties for librarians, but that was vetoed, we have to assume the same intent applies to other similar statutes on the books. Um, so in this situation, when Mr. Varda filed his reports, um, one with uh his concern about the school libraries and another with his concern with the public library, um, both of these matters were assigned to the lieutenant at the Grand Forks Police Department that oversees the Criminal Investigations Bureau, essentially the top dog of all the criminal investigations at the Grand Forks Police Department. I have worked with him for many years. He's a very seasoned investigator um with several years of experience on very difficult and high-profile cases. Um, he gathered information from Mr. Varda. He reviewed the books in question. Um, he staffed the matters with the two assistant state's attorneys from our office. Um, and the Grand Forks Police Department's conclusion um was that there wasn't sufficient evidence to rise to the to the level of a criminal violation. And so despite the fact that Mr. Varda says that charges were forwarded to our office, they were not. Um, Grand Forks Police Department did not substantiate uh charges for these criminal offenses. Our office was conferred and we agree with the conclusions of the Grand Forks Police Department. And as former Sheriff Frost is well aware, we can't do our job without our partner law enforcement agencies forwarding an affidavit of probable cause or a citation indicating that after their investigation, they believe that a criminal offense is substantiated. Um, in addition to that, as prosecutors, we have an ethical obligation that we cannot bring charges unless we believe that there's a reasonable likelihood of conviction. The law enforcement partners that we've worked with on these cases do not believe so, and we share that conclusion with them. And not only um has law enforcement completed a thorough investigation, um after I received notice that Mr. Varda requested to appear today on this topic, um I made a request for a copy of of this, the relevant law enforcement reports because the one more recent one wasn't even sent over to our office. So we had to request that report from law enforcement.
Ma'am, I I apologize for that. You should have had it because when I spoke to the lieutenant at the Grand Forks Police Department the first time, he told me he specifically did forward it to your office.
That's correct.
And then your office sent me a response saying that they're choosing not to prosecute.
Regarding the school district.
Yes, the second one, uh when the lieutenant called and left a voicemail on my uh on my phone and he said that he provided to you and again, you said based off of the school district decision, you're not gonna prosecute on this one either. So I we're both getting conflicting.
Mr. Varda, it was staffed with our office. The report was never forwarded to our office.
So you staff it and say it's not supported, then they say, okay, it's not supported. We're not gonna push it up. Is that?
So after after I received notice that you were appearing on this topic today, I requested a copy of that police report. I did review it. Our office has also staffed the matter amongst other attorneys. Um, and and we agree with the conclusions of the Grand Forks Police Department on both of these cases.
But ma'am, it it wasn't their conclusion. It was your staff that said you're not gonna, according to the voicemail app, it was your staff that said that they're not gonna pursue it based off of the school board decision. That's exactly what the lieutenant told me.
We did legal research on the first report that was received. And so based on our legal research on this statute and our review of that case file, this was a very similar nature
Right.
report.
So I understand that.
So the same conclusions um were reached on both cases because it's the same statute involved and the same nature of of the report received.
So then I would just want to clarify that it was provided to your office, the state's attorney's office, and the decision was.
Yeah, I don't wanna parse errors with you, but um
That's what I'm trying to stop.
Just to kind of help you understand how cases come over. If a law enforcement agency believes that charges should be filed, they send us either an affidavit of probable cause saying, I, the law enforcement officer, believes there's probable cause that a criminal offense has occurred. Or they cite the offender and submit the citation to our office stating that they believe that criminal offense has occurred based on the probable cause standard.
Correct, yes.
That was not done on either of these cases. Law enforcement did not believe they had the low legal standard of probable cause to send it over. Now, after our office's review of the files, we agree. We I I reviewed the file, two other assistant state's attorneys reviewed the file. Our office agrees with the conclusion that law enforcement came to in these cases. With that said, I think it's important to note, I don't know about you, Mr. Varda, I myself am a parent. A parent of very young children. Commissioner Hagan and I have discussed specifically some of these books that are in the library because she is the portfolio commissioner for the library board. I fully respect and agree with your conclusion that some of these books do not belong in the children's section. But my personal views aren't the legal standards set out for us by the North Dakota Legislature. There's a difference between my personal views and what I am obligated to follow. I take an oath, the assistant state's attorneys in my office take an oath that we will follow the laws of the state of North Dakota. So while I agree that some of these books should not be in the children's section, I do not agree that they meet the elements of a crime that has occurred in our community.
I think therein lies our problem, ma'am. Looking at just just looking at chapter twelve, the obscenity law.
In any event, I think it's important for Mr. Varda and everybody in this room to recognize that law enforcement took these reports from Mr. Varda very seriously. These were assigned to the top investigator at the Grand Forks Police Department. They thoroughly investigated it. They staffed it with our office. Our office staffed it amongst a number of attorneys in our office. We researched the legislative history. We finally combed through the century code to determine if there were any other laws that may apply here. And that is our conclusion. I respect that Mr. Varda doesn't agree with us. But in any event, I think it's important for him and others to know that his concerns were taken were taken very seriously. I also think it's important to note that um the second bill that I handed out, House Bill twelve oh five, there are remedies for situations like this that the legislature has laid out. Those remedies are not criminal remedies, but it's a process to follow for citizens if they find that there are books in school libraries or public libraries that either should be removed or relocated. That process is very clear. Um, I have had a number of conversations with Commissioner Hagan because she is well aware of uh how the library is is working through this new legislation. And um I think she might have some updates for the board as well on that topic.
Yeah, I just wanted so everyone is on the same page. I had a couple of handouts. I know recently there were some family member, family members, parents um that have gone to the library to talk about the books that Mr. Varda has brought to our attention, but not only those, but many others and the process as to how people can have books up for reconsideration and move them either to other parts of the library and such. So the first thing that I may hand out is the policy as to what the library has on file. Sorry, sorry Cindy. Um, and then the next one is the reconsideration form. So if anybody does find a book in the library that they feel needs to be moved. Okay, two, yeah, sorry, I'll send them to you. Um, if anybody wants them, I have them here. Um, but then also a reconsideration form that needs to be filled out. Um, and then the third thing I'm handing out is
Commissioner Hagan, what is, can you furnish them with a copy?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just trying to make my rounds.
I didn't, we're not allowed to get that.
Definitely. Last one is the recent books that were reviewed. Three of the books were moved. One of them that picture are from that book. So there is something of the library doing about it. Now, do I do I agree or not agree with some of the books that are still there? No. But that there is a process as to what parents and other citizens can be doing if they find a book that they don't agree with. So you can read the policy. They've had this policy on file for a long time since before I was on the board and before any of this has come to fruition. So the other thing that they are in the process of doing is, like Hailey had mentioned, the state is requiring libraries to turn in a report of books that have been up for reconsideration. The state hasn't given them a formula or a format as to how they are supposed to turn it in by May of next year, I believe it is. Um, but the state library is working on that. So they're in process of trying to have some checks and balances to make sure that if there's some issues on a in a county with the library, that the state will be aware of it through that. Through that um trust form. No, what is it called? Sorry. Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. We're gonna be moving on. Uh, thank you, Mr. Varda, for coming in. I would suggest that you talk to the lieutenant at the PD and find out if the affidavit of probable cause were, you know, because that's what the state's attorney goes by.
Yes, sir.
When I went by, that's what Sheriff Snyder goes by too. So.
Yep, no, understood. Um, it's funny, the information flow is just a little conflicted, I guess, you know, but that's all right. As long as we're trying to push justice through.
Absolutely.
Appropriate justice, that's key.
Appropriate justice, that's key.
All right, thanks for coming in.
Appreciate it.
All right. See, regional youth assessment center.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ross and members of the commission. That should be pretty quick. Um I'm just requesting your approval on a certified shelter care agreement prepared by Ms. Womston. Um I say template because I'm also requesting the grant me the authority to enter into this agreement with any human service zone in North Dakota and sign on behalf of the county. That way I don't have to come before you. Different contracts. They have it approved.
Any questions for me, commissioners at all? Do I have a motion to authorize that? So move by Commissioner Hagan, second. Second, anybody?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side. Motion's carried in now, so.
Thank you.
Right, emergency manager.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ross. Members support. Um this purchase agreement is going to look highly familiar from the one that you saw in the last one. Um working with um State's Attorney Womston, we had to make just a couple of changes to it. So we didn't have to try to do that with this particular property. So I'm asking for the chair to sign this one now. It's also already been signed by the owners of the property and closing on this property will be August fifteenth, but I will get reviewed with timing and everything on that. But I'm just requesting chairs and trying to hopefully the final for this agreement for this property.
I have a motion. Commissioner Hagan, go second. Cindy?
I'll give her chance.
I'll second it. Okay, Commissioner Hagan will second it. All those in favor of the motion. Aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion's carried unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, finance, the tax director.
Mister Chairman, member of the commission, I have the preliminary budget for twenty twenty four in front of you. I've given you copies of everything I'm going to discuss today. It's ten pages on the guest. The pages budget showing a increase of six point eight four mils and we'll go through everything that's on it. Employee's Association requested the following, a four percent COLA, a step increase, two extra personal days, increasing loan salaries from four to eight dollars. Human Resources requested a five percent market adjustment on October first, twenty twenty three for all employees excluding the sheriff's deputies. Out of market positions increased of seven percent on one one twenty four and regraded positions take effect on one one twenty twenty four. The preliminary budget has the requests requested items from HR included. They also, we also included steps for qualified employees on their seniority dates. After our last meeting on July twenty sixth, I heard from HR that they that I didn't mention the request by the Employees Association for a four percent COLA. And the reason I didn't was because the request that came up from HR for a market adjustment of five percent on October first. I thought that was the COLA. HR has said to me, market adjustment is different than the COLA. Market adjustment applied to every single employee other than the sheriff's deputies. I'm not sure exactly how it's different, but I guess it's different. Uh so they did request the four percent and that is not in here. They also said that if we're going, if you are going to make a choice between a step and a COLA, now step is already included in here, they would prefer a COLA. And I was again a little bit surprised by that because we've always said we need to do steps so we don't run into compression issues. But they would prefer to have a COLA instead of a step. And I said COLAs are much more expensive because they start January one and apply to everybody. So I calculated the cost. So I would have a similar cost to a three percent step increase, and that's a one percent COLA. So if you decided you didn't want to do steps, you could do a one percent COLA and have a neutral effect on the budget. And at any point, if you want me to stop so we can discuss this, let me know.
Is there any discussion on that point for me, the commissioners?
So a four percent COLA, which the Employees Association asked for would be six hundred and sixty four thousand dollars in addition of two point three three mils in addition to what we're at right now. After the last administrative services meeting, two additional items were added to request by a sheriff's deputy to a sergeant. It would cost thirteen thousand six hundred and three dollars and that's our point zero five mils and that's already in there. Um and that's the worst case scenario because we don't know who would fill that position yet. Seventeenth was added as a paid holiday and cost a fifteen thousand nine hours thirty six dollars or point zero six mils. With those two additional items and the additional items previously discussed, which includes positions um an additional HR position, an additional IT position, reclassifying an IT position um from a grade eleven to a grade twelve, two additional youth assessment positions, an additional buildings and grounds position. And if you take into account that what we, the last item, the reclassifying the sheriff's deputy, that total cost for employees new additional employees is four hundred and sixty four thousand dollars. Our one point six three mils. Salaries. All full-time employees, elected officials, excluding sheriff's deputies, will be increased by five percent on October twenty twenty three as recommended by recommended by the HR department. The approximate cost, including the highways, by eight five thousand nine hundred and eighty seven dollars or two point zero six mils. I say excluding the highway is because they will absorb absorb the cost within their budget. So there will be no change to the budget. There will be thirty nine positions uh will be regraded effective January one, twenty twenty four. The the approximate cost is two hundred and nine thousand point seven four mils. Now, if you choose, you could say, we're not going to do the regraded positions and you'd save yourself point seven four mils. The earlier uh thing about salaries of five percent, you're doing that, you've already made a motion October one of this year. So if you didn't pass that, you would be, everyone would be getting a pay cut January one. There's a hundred and twelve positions that were identified as out of market and will receive a seven percent increase January one. The approximate cost is seven hundred fifty six thousand nine hundred forty four dollars for two point six six mils. The sheriff's deputy's salary scale was approved effective January, July one, twenty twenty three, and the cost is two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for twenty twenty four or point nine seven mils. Step increases on seniority dates have been included for all qualified employees. Sheriff's deputies are included, regraded positions are not, they're excluded. Um their staff, their um seniority date will change to January one, twenty twenty four, so are so they will not get a step in twenty twenty four. Retirement, N D PERS will increase thirteen point two six to fourteen point two six in twenty twenty four. Eighty five thousand dollars or point three mils. Sworn personnel will transition from the N D PERS defined benefit plan to N D PERS, that public safety plan. Additional cost is one point seven eight percent of their salary. Our hundred and twenty two thousand dollars, point four three mils. One thing that hasn't been discussed is that there could be a requirement to have them pay that additional amount themselves. And they would have the option either to stay with the defined benefit plan or the public safety plan. Health insurance, the range we were given for an increase was four to ten percent. We included ten percent. Last year, we were given a range of five to twelve percent. We included five percent last year, but the increase was only two percent. None of this or increase for this year or for twenty twenty four was just under three percent. For a hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty four, point three five mils. Contracted services. You guys, these requests of two hundred and three thousand nine hundred and eighty five dollars have been included, which is an increase of ninety eight thousand nine eighty five or point three four mils. The detox center was increased by thirty five thousand two hundred and thirty thousand point one two mils. Page four has a list of all the departments and the increase by percentage uh for each department. And this isn't new. I had presented this to you before, so I will go through it. On page five, it shows um this is the budget now and not the the levy, three point two three seven. Page five shows three point two million dollar increase in your in general fund budgets, twelve point three eight percent increase over last year. The levy dollar increases three point one. That's after the revenue and cash is deducted. So that's what the amount we would be letting. Page six shows all the other comparisons. I have to point out the capital construction showing a one point nine million dollar increase. It's not actually a one point nine. In twenty twenty three, we didn't levy for the correctional center bonds because we had cash to pay, make the payment. So we don't have the expense because we had revenue to offset it. Offset it. In twenty twenty four, this is showing you the expense, the one point two that we have the revenue for. So it's not part of our overall levy. But it looks like we went up one point nine, which we didn't. We're going up uh six hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars over last year. So it looks a little deceiving because we had it in our budget or we're having it in our budget in twenty twenty four. We didn't have it in twenty twenty three, but the net effect is the same. So at the bottom there, the total budget is a ten point two two percent increase if you take out that. Either subtract the budget from twenty twenty four for the capital improvements that we have to fund for or add it to the twenty twenty three budget. Either way, um we're at our budget is ten point two two percent greater. The next page, page seven, let's just go through all the um increases that we saw in the general fund. Where did their our increases come from? The four point seven million dollars? Well, forty six percent come from salaries. The increase in salaries that we're going to do for twenty twenty four, that's forty six percent of our overall increase. And then another big chunk is um the uh capital improvements. That's fourteen percent. We have twelve percent from the valuation of a mill increase. When your value increases, your, if you have authority to lever levy a certain amount of mils, your your um dollars requested increases because of that. Now, it's five hundred ninety two thousand or twelve percent. I have a breakdown of every department. The large increases that came from the department. So back to page seven, have the salaries. Right under that, I have the correctional center. Under that, I have about ten different items that those are the things that increased in their department. Other than salaries. Uh medical went up by thirty five percent or thirty five thousand. Vehicle, thirty four five, gas, and so forth. That's listed here. Each department's increases are listed here. County administrator base retention, it was taken out of the twenty twenty three and put back in with a budget amendment after the fact. And that's why it shows here because we didn't levy for twenty twenty three, although not put in twenty twenty three. It shows a thirty one thousand five hundred dollar increase in the budget. The tax, the auditing fee. Our auditing fee from the state increased. Now we have a different company rating marks and it's similar in in cost, but we had to increase our fee for that. And you can go through each department and see. I've taken um the large increases and put them on here. So you could go line by line and see. So at the bottom, on page nine, it says budget increase at five point nine. That includes that one point nine or two million dollar um bond payments that we have to fund um to cover. So four point seven. Page ten shows you the revenue. Comparison twenty twenty four to twenty twenty three. Um property tax, we get most of our revenue from there. And twenty twenty three was seventy three percent. Twenty four, we have seventy four percent. So it's very similar. Um I'm showing you what the other revenue consisted of. Big changes in interest income and the shelter care for twenty twenty four. Showing all nine hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars. Eleven shows you the estimated costs or value of a mill. We went off seven point seven eight percent. General fund mills last year was forty five mils. So we have an additional one point two million dollars based on the valuation increase. We had an additional revenue of eight hundred and twenty two thousand four sixty four. And we're using less cash of seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The preliminary budget is at ninety seven mils or a six point eight four mil increase over the current year. Without the three million dollars that we're using in cash, we would be at fifty eight point eight six mils in the general fund. The limit is sixty. Page twelve shows you what um example of the increase on the Grand Forks County portion of the property tax bill, assuming a five percent increase on a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar residential value and a four percent increase on a two hundred and thirty thousand commercial or agricultural property. So for a residential property that was two hundred and thirty thousand in twenty twenty two and went up by a percent to two hundred and forty one thousand five hundred. The county portion of their taxes would go up about one hundred and twenty one dollars. Twelve point nine seven increase in an A property um that was valued at two hundred and thirty thousand for twenty twenty two and a four percent increase for twenty twenty three at two hundred and thirty nine thousand two hundred. Would see an increase of a hundred and twenty three dollars in taxes in the county portion. Page thirteen. Notice of estimated property tax and budget hearing notice by August tenth each year. Each tap tap, each taxing district that intends to levy over a hundred thousand dollars must submit a preliminary budget along with the date, time, and location of their budget hearing, which could, which cannot be earlier than September seventh. If a taxing district fails to provide the information required by August tenth, they may not impose a property tax levy in a greater amount in dollars than was imposed in the prior year. By August for thirty first, I am required to provide a notice to each property owner with an estimated property tax if they owe at least a hundred dollars. The drag cost of providing the notices will be allocated proportionately to the number of notices mailed on behalf of each taxing district that intends to levy and accept and accept a hundred thousand dollars in property taxes in the current year. Are there any questions or request requested changes on the budget? Anyone from the public could be heard at this time.
Questions, Commissioner Hagan? Back on page eleven, you said that uh the former budget is ninety seven mils. Without the three million we have cash, it would be more. What about next year? I mean, that's that's fine, so this year. What about next year? We won't have, maybe we won't have three million in cash.
Right, we, you know, we also don't know what valuation is going to do next year. We'll look. Will it go up higher, will it maintain, will it decrease? All will happen. So even if the valuation decreases, then we can levy more than sixty mils. If our value, we just couldn't get more dollars. Our mills could exceed sixty if our valuation decreased in graphics.
Sure, that's. That cash that we have allowed us to be at fifty point, uh, general fund.
Fifty point two three.
Okay, and if it hadn't been for that, it would be what, closer to fifty-seven or eight?
Right.
Eight, was it?
Fifty-eight point eight six.
We didn't have that cash. So, yeah, Commissioner Ruston, um, the way I see it, looking at this a lot, kind of stressing over it quite a bit, is basically next year, we've spent everything the state allows us to spend. We've got a maxed out credit card. And we've got a sheriff's department being evicted essentially for lack of a better term at twenty twenty-seven. We have to make some difficult decisions in order to balance this budget because we can't run a deficit with the federal government.
We, we gotta hope for our half set sales tax.
We'll make some dumb decisions prior to that because we don't know.
Oh, I know. I'm just saying.
Is anything on hope? So, I mean, I didn't reach out to Debbie and Haley both this week to ask if there's any flexibility with the jail project where maybe we can incorporate a sheriff's department along with that original bond. It doesn't sound like that's the case, but I would request that we exhaust those options and maybe change that project just some prior to it being too late. You know, it's impotent stages right now. They could be nimble and, and because what I don't want us to run into at twenty-seven is no place for the sheriff's department to live and no money to buy or anything and no credit to borrow. So I, and that's a real, real big concern because I don't believe there was much ambiguity with what the police department's message was to us is that.
Well, and, and, and you know, when, when you talk about a space for the sheriff, you're also talking about the nine-one-one center. You're talking about, uh, Kari, emergency management. So if we're talking to nine-one-one center being part of this deal, then the city should be kicking in money into that too.
I'm just wondering if we have the flexibility with the way, or if there's anything we can do.
At this point, I don't believe so. We've been going to construction meetings every Tuesday at ten. And, uh, they're, they're pretty locked into what they're doing right now and, uh.
I know that's what they're gonna say because they don't want to change course. It's our job to change course if we have to have a fluid. You know, so, I mean, this is just one person's idea, but I don't, I don't really see another path with the way our budget's lining up and to, to sit and pretend like we're sure the sales tax is gonna pass. I don't think it's fair to the citizenry, in my opinion.
Mr. Chair, another option would be a vote on the capital construction levy. So that can be increased by both people from ten. I believe the twenty.
Mr. Chair, I, I never heard asked a question. But so, so the commission approved it pack one and after today's construction meeting, everything that would be funded under pitch, uh, bid package one has been ordered and is on the way. Everything's on, on schedule to be delivered until we cross different bridges. So at this point, anything within bid package one, I don't think could be altered because it been ordered, precast footing, everything's on the way, rebar. Bid package two, if the commission, I don't even know if it's an option either, but if the commission wanted to entertain that, that question, uh, we'd have to ask that question today because again, from the meeting we had, bid package two is about to hit the street. Um, and so we don't, we don't want advertising bits if, if the concept for the projects have been changed. The, the other thing is, um, and this is putting the cart well in front of the horse, but based on conversations I've had with, with the city, Todd Beal and Mayor, uh, Sheriff Schneider, Ms. Longstead, Ben, and then talks of potentially another sales tax, which is a commission decision. There's, there is interest from the city to collate, uh, co-locate the nine-one-one center in with any kind of building the county could, could potentially erect, uh, for the sheriff's office. And, and the city is willing to work with us, but that's again, that's to Commissioner Ruston's point. That's a, in if, you know, the only way the county could do that is on a sales tax. But there is, those discussions have started and they're willing to do that.
Wonderful.
Right, correct, yes.
I'm aware of how late in the process this is, but the project just bonded before my arrival. So I didn't know all the necessary information of learning about bonding as things go along. But my concern is for our financial situation. It's, it's not any disdain for a certain project, even though I may have it. It is more so the right sizing of this ship, turn it around before it hits the iceberg, so to speak. And my, we don't have a lot of wiggle room after next year. So we, I think we have to make some tough decisions. Some of those have to maybe have to come in this meeting. Obviously, without knowing how. Exactly, that's the bonding works. I just splashes on y'all here in this meeting. It's not fair to expect any sort of vote or motion right now. I understand that, but I just maybe, maybe consider me, you know, hitting the pillow tonight as a possibility of, you know, maybe killing two birds with one stone, so to speak. Yeah, it's even.
Was this a good question?
Okay.
Bit baggage two. To get the streets win.
Uh, we, so it's been, so, uh, construction engineers has sent it to Icon. Icon is finalizing it and their goal is to publish next week.
And we heard, and I've heard Brett Burkhilders speak on a couple of occasions as to the need for the size that this project is projected to be. Aren't we stuck with that size of a project?
Well, it also includes, say, youth assessment center too.
Well, that's what most of it is, is youth assessment center. So that's something we absolutely have to do something with, obviously, the whole building, my gosh. What, what, how could, what could we cut though to accomplish what, what we think might have to be done? I don't know. I don't know. That's why I'm throwing out ideas that.
Well, the auditor threw out the fact that we could vote of the people for, to raise capital improvements. Uh, money will go from what, ten to twenty mills?
Yeah, it's either ten to twenty or even thirty. I can't remember.
Yeah, but it would take a vote of the people, so. But here regardless, the people are gonna understand whether it's that or whether it is a half cent sales tax that we're gonna try and go for in twenty twenty-four that, uh, a lot of that money is gonna go for the sheriff and the nine-one-one center, uh, infrastructure, county roads and bridges. So it's like, I think when the people understand that, I think we'll get twenty votes that we missed last time, so.
But then the question is, what if they don't?
Well, that's what we gotta decide, isn't it? I think we're locked into what we're doing right now.
Yeah, it's a little, little hard, uh, possible to change the central center and youth assessment center in midstream, yeah, it seems to me. I don't know, we could have made it smaller in the first.
Yeah, well, I think, I did. To rest it, we need to take a little time, think about it, so. And we could sit here and talk for this for about two hours, so.
So, um, if there's nothing you want to take out of the budget right now, I would need a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget as presented. Um, knowing that it can always go down from here.
Yeah.
For the final budget.
And that is, yeah, we buy our what, what meeting, September meeting.
So the preliminary has to be approved August tenth and then I have a request after this.
Yes.
Is that the?
Nineteenth, yeah.
Yep, this meeting in September for the budget here.
So, I mean, because there's a number of things in here that are, what if this, what if that? And I don't know which ones, if any, should come out, but that we can.
You still.
We don't have to do those things.
We would just approve it. We can always come down, you know, so. With a way.
All right, well, I've, I've got a question, Ms. Longstead. I was talking to you recently about the, uh, state's attorneys out of market issues. Is that included in this preliminary budget or not?
Yeah.
So that, that is included because I think like the sheriffs, the state's attorneys are once more on the firing line and who also have the opportunity to jump jobs in a heartbeat because, you know, in private sector or, or easier jobs or whatever else, they, they can go. So that's one that I hope we can keep in. But, you know, I'd like to keep everything in the, it's, it's tough.
Yeah. But we've got time. We can take this and, I mean, we can approve, we can go down. We just can't go up any higher, so.
The only suggestion that I have is the additional positions. I don't know if that's gonna need to be adding additional positions when we just got to start paying people, not even, but they should be paid, but just enough to keep up. That was, that's the only thing that I really think that's sticking up to me.
Seven.
Um, there's five, but there's one, I think the buildings and grounds, one was already approved for the snow removal, sorry.
All this right.
So that's the only thing that I wanted to put out for discussion or to think about because.
Well, like I said, you know, we can approve what, what we, what we're doing today and we can go down. And we can talk about that and touch whatever we want. We just can't add.
Definitely nothing I'm looking at.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna add anything. I just.
Right.
Chairman Ross, can I ask a question quick?
Yeah. Since it's a citizen comment period.
Yeah.
What, uh, I, you explained it, Debbie explained a couple of different options that were uh, being put forth for the employees. Which one is in this budget is the four percent call off step to LS hours, two more personal days? Or is it, uh, seven percent regraded and steps for employees on seniority dates?
So the five percent market adjustment that ha- happened October this year is in the twenty twenty-four budget and we have to let for it because we're not loving for twenty twenty-three. So that five percent is in there at the, um, and that's for everybody but the sheriff's deputies. The out of market positions are a hundred and twelve positions that will increase by seven percent on one one twenty twenty-four. The regraded positions are thirty-nine would take effect on one one twenty twenty-four. And the step increase is in there.
Thank you.
For everybody, uh, except for the regraded, but includes the sheriff's deputies.
Do we have any choice on regrades?
Whether or not to do it. Yes, you.
Well, the, the decision is whether allow them to be regraded rather than simply the money.
Yeah, they wouldn't have to be regretted.
I see, okay.
Yeah, you have the options, uh, the hundred and twelve out of market. You didn't want to do all of those or some of those, you have that option. But they're in, in the budget right now.
That Ms. Mills in the but four percent coal is not.
It is not. It is not. The request by the employees association of four percent coal is not in this budget. And when I, when I got the request for the five percent market adjustment and as of October, I got that covered.
And if they were to go on the four percent coal, we'd.
That would be.
Car call way long, it would be added.
We would have to add two point three three more mills.
And then have a problem with steps. Wouldn't that cause a problem with compression?
Yeah, that, yeah, that was, it's the problem that we forego, forgave, uh, going with steps for years.
Yeah.
Every, the request, the employees association, and we ended up with compression issues.
Yes.
So we tried not to do that anymore, go coal and not steps.
All right, any other questions by anybody? Otherwise, I would be seeking a motion to approve preliminary budget for twenty twenty-four.
I'm going to approve the preliminary budget.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Peach. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we'll do a roll call. Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Ruston. Not approved, okay? Commissioner Hagan. Okay, Commissioner Peach.
Aye, yes, approved.
Okay, Commissioner Hagan. And I vote aye also. So we've got a three to two vote to approve the preliminary budget.
And the other thing is I need the motion to set the, um, budget hearing that will go on the estimated tax notices. I have that.
September nineteenth, at four o'clock?
Yes. So I need a motion to accept the final budget hearing for September nineteenth, so twenty-three at four.
At four o'clock? Do I have a motion that affect?
One and a two.
Okay, one and a two. Okay, Ruston, Hagan. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
County administrator.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, just one item for housekeeping. Uh, the last county commission meeting, you approved the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five U L development grant contract with chair's signature. Uh, since then, um, commerce noted an eleven dollar and seven, uh, eleven dollar seventy-seven cent difference in carryover. We do agree that there was a difference, so the carryover amount in the total grant amount decreases by eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Just, uh, but since we've changed the, uh, the grant amount, I would ask for, uh, commission approval of the grant, the updated grant contract and chair's signature.
All right, well, motion to that effect. So moved, so moved by Commissioner Ruston, seconded by Commissioner Hagan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried unanimously.
That's all I have, sir.
All right, state's attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I do have one item. It's part of the packet. Um, our office, uh, has an agreement, uh, with the North Dakota Department of Emergency Services um, for use of a, uh, essentially criminal history terminal for us to run criminal histories reports. Um, I reviewed this contract. Um, the state and I have agreed that we cannot agree to paragraph five so that provision is struck. Um, but I would ask for a motion to approve this agreement with the chair's signature as well as the chair's initials by paragraph number five.
Great. Do I have a motion, Commissioner Ruston? Do I have a second? Commissioner Hagan, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All those staying signed, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. I have nothing further for the board.
Committee reports, Commissioner Ruston.
Left my notes on my desk at work, so I'll catch you next time. So just M P O, so.
Commissioner Hagan, you want to talk about the library?
Uh, nothing new has come since then.
Commissioner Peach.
Nothing new to report, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hagan.
A couple newer, uh, the last couple of weeks, but this morning was a good brief meeting out at Grand Sky and well attended by Zoom with some other people, so. That's all kinds of positive information on what's going on at the airbase. Colonel Monroe, the new commander, who for a while on crew and, uh, basically our one.
Yep, and I was at the same meeting. I thought the same thing was a very good meeting. Uh, we had emergency management meeting, what, a week ago, something like that, and that was very informative. We have those quarterly, so, uh, Kari does a very good job with it, so. Gotta be true.
Kari does a very good job with it, so, that's gotta be approved.
All right, on that, that's all I got, any unfinished? New business. All right, how about any correspondence?
Mister Chair, we, uh, members of the commission, we have two items.
Okay.
Uh, just a thank you from the Greater Grand Forest Community Service Restitution.
Ooh, Commissioner Hagan.
Motion to adjourn these.
Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Ruston, all of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.